Good evening and welcome to the city council meeting of the city of Lenore for Tuesday, March the 7th. You're gonna have to put up with my voice tonight, and I'm sorry about that. Got a little trainees going on here, but we welcome you tonight. As we usually do when we get started, we'll go ahead and rise for our moment of silence and remain standing for our pledge of allegiance.
We salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we get started tonight, I would first like to welcome our newest member of the city of Lenore team, our new Parks and Recreation Executive Director, Mr. Philip Harper. Philip, glad to have you with us. Philip is from here, went to Lenore High, uh, Lenore High School, went to Highbryton High School and has been in Parks and Recreation for many years across the state and is returning home to be with us as our new Director of Recreation. Got some good shoes to fill there with those guys, but Philip, we welcome you aboard and look forward to working with you. Thank you for having faith to come back and be a part of us. We're honored to have you. All right, and one of the things that we'll do first, we'll talk a little bit about parks and recreation and trails and I've got a thing to hold up here. This is Discover, I'm gonna look at it first before we hold it up. This is the year of the trail. This is Discover Your Burke Trails Day. This is in Burke County, but we'll be working together with Burke and as part of Colville County as well. This is at the comma auditorium, March 11th from 12 to 5. It'll be hosted by Deborah Holt Noel from the PBS No Counta Weekend Show. You've probably seen her before. And we'll feature a number of guest speakers at the comma, and this is part of the 2023 Year of the Trail Celebration. So we'll be holding that up and we want everyone to be a part of that and then we'll be doing things here in in Colville County as part of that. We also welcome Bryant Lindsey from over in the Burke County area. Bryant, thank you for coming and sharing this with us. Anything you want to add to that?
I don't need that anymore.
You're very welcome. Thank you. Thank you for being with us tonight and bringing this. We'll look forward to sharing this. All right, we'll move on then. First there is our annual report from our Chief of Police, Chief Brent Phelps, who will present the department's annual report. Chief, welcome.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I will go through the numbers fairly quickly and then at the end give an opportunity to ask questions. If there's something on the slide that you have a question, you're obviously welcome to ask it at that time.
But we'll go through the numbers. The full report is on our website on the city council. I believe council has received that. There's a lot of information. This is a summary, a condensed version, so every single thing I won't bore you with this evening, but our data and information is in the report. Just hitting some of the highlights in our police activity, this specifically comes out of our reporting. Let me explain, because when you look at it, it doesn't quite make sense the way I put it, put it in there. What, in 2018, we switched to the NIBRAS reporting system about halfway through 2018, which was a new reporting system for the police department and and the state. 2019 was the first year we had a full year of that data under that new reporting system of NIBRAS, which is the National Incident Based Reporting System that every law enforcement agency in the state has used. Then we hit 2020 and 21, and now we have numbers for 22. Everything in 2020 bottomed out, all of, with the pandemic and and everything us going through. So I felt like our true numbers were the baseline numbers from 2019. So in here, you will see me comparing, I've got the other numbers there, but you'll see me comparing 2022 to the numbers of 2019, because I feel like those are truer, accurate numbers for, for where we are. So our crimes against persons, that's a category, those were up 25% from 2019 at 395 versus 315. This past year in 2022, we had zero homicides, which is a good thing. That was down. We had two. You know, for us, our, those types of incidents are very specific, a lot of times very domestic related, or we don't, knock on wood, have too many whodunnits. And so it's not uncommon for us to go for a couple of years with with none, and then sometimes we may have one or two at a time. Our crimes against society actually reduced from the numbers of 2019 from 438 to 570. Our crimes against property, property crimes, yes, sir.
Definition, crimes against society.
There's, there's a whole list of things that fall in there. Your drug crimes fall in there, your alcohol-related crimes fall in there, things that where we would consider the state being the victim under the old reporting system. Somebody uses graffiti at Mulberry Rec. That's gonna be, it would fall under there.
95% are drug-related.
Do what?
Looking at your numbers, 95% are drug-related.
Yeah, the, the bulk of those in that category are are drug-related, and we'll, we'll talk about some of the drug numbers that concern us in a minute. Crimes against property, which are our property crimes, I was, to be completely honest, as I looked at these numbers, I was a little surprised, because we have seen over the last two years, our property crimes going up, but they're fairly consistent with where they were in 2019. Calls for service for the police department, our, you know, gracious council members from time to time get calls from folks over animals. Those, those were about the same, a 2% reduction, but fairly close to those numbers. Our civil disturbances were up. There's a lot of things that fall into that category for civil disturbances, but there's an increase there. Our domestics were down. Those went up in 20, in 21, and then came back down. And, you know, when you think about what was going on, people were confined, people were at home, people were together, and we felt like those would go up in 2020, and they did. And then once folks were able to start getting back out into society, some of that has dropped back off. Our involuntary commitments, those have, I mean, just went through the roof. For, I could give you the number, I know eight to 10 years, those numbers hovered between 90 and 100 every year. And then we began to see a big increase in 21, coming out of 2020, where they more than doubled, or almost doubled. And then this year, we had 210, which is a 121% increase from 2019. Our overdoses, and, and this is not a Lenore-specific problem. This is a problem across our state, across our nation. A 216% increase from 2019, and then you can see the numbers for 21. Our opioid-induced from 2019 numbers specifically, 330% increase in just, in just that category. Last year, we used Narcan 73 times and attributed to saving 71 different people's lives before EMS got there from our officers using that. The, the focus with that, obviously, we, we know that's a concern. Our opioid-related seizures were in excess of $750,000. The next drug in our category that was anywhere close was marijuana, and it was less than half of that. So a lot of our focus is on the opioid-related drugs, and it needs to be.
Are all your officers now qualified to administer?
All, all of our officers are, are certified and, and have Narcan in their car and on their person, and that's for two reasons, to be completely honest. One, one reason is in the event our officers get exposed on the street, they could use it to administer it to a fellow officer, and we also allow them, some, the, a lot of departments do, not every department in the nation does, but a lot of departments do. When we looked into it years ago, Chief Brown was here, should, is this something law enforcement should be doing? And we could not find a reason that we felt like, you know, would stop us, and so...
Is there federal assistance with funding for that?
Yes and no.
Because I knew that there was a big opioid push from the federal government to help get down into the communities.
For the first four or five years through the North Carolina, I'm gonna get the name wrong, Out of Raleigh Harm Reduction Coalition, I believe is the name of it, they would give us a batch of Narcan for our officers, and that came from federal funding and some state funding. Those allotments have become harder and harder to get, because more and more places are using it, and the amounts of what they're using are going up. Right now, we're at a good place. We hit a point about a year ago where our numbers were getting low, and we were able, thankfully, to get restocked, and so right now, we've, we've got a decent supply on hand, but me and the manager and Ms. Donna have talked, there may come a point down the road where so far, we've not had to purchase any, but it, it may come to that, that, that we have to start purchasing it. And that would be a very hard thing, I think, for us to, to discontinue once we've been doing it. So, you know, we, we would have to look at it, but hopefully, we'll be able to continue to, to have that without a cost. Just some other numbers. Our criminal charges, we had felony and misdemeanor, 2,922, 272 drug charges, 46 different alcohol violations. Our crashes, this number averages between 1,000 and 1,200 every year, so it's fairly consistent with where our crashes are at. Our vehicle stops, not quite 3,500, and then the number of citations and the number of warning citations. Then you've got some numbers in our investigations unit of over a million dollars in recovered stolen property, that includes vehicles. Vehicles helped to bump that number up, and then the illegal narcotics that were seized with us and other agencies being a little over 3.8 million. And then cash and property seized, over a million dollars worth of cash and property seized from our investigators. Just some other numbers, our communications center processed 38,000 CAD calls. These are calls for service in our patrol division, over 23,000. House, special checks and house checks, almost 10,000 of those, and then over 1,100 call follow-ups. I think the year before, we had 600 or 700, so that was an increase there, which is a good thing in our mind. In our investigations division, they worked 2,100 criminal cases, had 94 search warrants and 15 knock and talks, which is a voluntary, where we may get a, a report that somebody has stolen property at this house, but we don't have enough to get a search warrant. Investigators may go knock on the door and say, this is what we've been told, can we come in and look around? And they can consent or not consent. And, and so 15 of those. And then nuisance cases, which everyone is familiar with, we had 178 of those. 103 were owner-abated and 27 city-abated. Two of those were very extensive, y'all are familiar with, at the two locations. The one is pretty much completed and moved on. We're still in process with the other. The property has been sold, but we're still working through some of the challenges with that individual. Some other police activity numbers that we put out there, we feel like is important to, to put in our annual report. We have to report our traffic stops to the state every year. Every law enforcement agency in the state has to do that. We go ahead and put this information out, just trying to be transparent. This is our enforcement activity by race. We have that broken down by felony arrests, misdemeanor arrests, traffic stops, and then use of force. And you can see those numbers and where those percentages fall out. Going into force, because it's such a hot topic, last year, we had 50 uses of force incidents, and, and 50 can sound like a lot. You know, wow, there's 50 times officers had to use some type of force. One of the things that we look at, we can document through our numbers, we had over 26,000, almost 27,000 law enforcement interactions. Now, we know those numbers are low. You know, an event, let's say, a, a high school football game at Highbryton, we're counting that as one event. We're gonna have six officers there, and then how many public interactions do those six officers have at a, at a Highbryton football game? You think about the Blackberry Festival, how many public interactions do we have that we really, it's almost impossible for us to document? So we know that number is extremely low, but those are the ones we can document. And so when you look at the number of uses of force with the number of citizen contacts we're having, it's less than a quarter of 1%, very low. And so we're proud of that. We feel like it's important to keep up with that and track it. We also, you know, report and look into on an annual basis, you know, all those and break those down by, by officers. Extra Duty Solutions, this is our off-duty management company we went to several years ago. We were, we were one of the, I tell the other chiefs from some of the other cities, you know, we were one of the first ones in our area to go to it. Now Hickory's doing it. I think Morganton's looking at it and some other places. We've had really good success at them managing that, that process for us and program. We had over 3,600 hours of working at different, different events, and that works out to 1.6 full-time officers. And so, you know, that allows us to have officers at events or at locations where other people are, are paying for that, for that service. Just some other stats quickly. We had 11 ABC permits, that process comes through us for us to sign off on. We did 24 background, and I'll talk about some personnel numbers in a second, but that's about double what we normally do as far as the number. Crime Stoppers numbers, evidence, items, we're at 49,000. I think we got rid of about 4,000 items of evidence this past year. That is a continual, just a, ongoing process. Some of the reasons those numbers have went up, you know, that also includes our digital evidence. So, you know, every body camera video, well, that counts as a piece of evidence. Every car camera video, that's housed and stored, and so there's a lot of, lot of that that's tracked and we have to manage and keep up with. Little over 10,000 departmental training hours from the newest officer to me is tracked, and then our professional certificates, which is our general, our intermediate, advanced, and we're at about 65% of our staff, and we get a 7% discount with, with some of our insurance ratings through the league for obtaining those. Some other things, last year that we worked through, we hired 11 full-time employees, six officers, two trainees, two telecommunicators, and a secretary. That sounds great. Now, out of that, we lost 16. Out of the 16 we lost, we had two that retired. One of those has stayed on with us part-time. We had four officers that are still connected to us, but they've went from full-time to part-time, and they're doing something else. Most all of them are doing something outside of law enforcement, full-time. They're still helping us with events and some of the downtown special things we do. But, you know, we do have one that is next week coming back full-time with us. He went back to doing a, a trade and has now decided he thinks he wants to come back, so that's a good thing. We're excited about that, since he has several years of experience. We had four that resigned before completing field training. So out of those six officers and two trainees that we hired, four of those didn't make it through the field training process. And, you know, we have a lot invested in, in an employee when we, when we get them through there, but sometimes field training is set up for that. We, we hope for everybody to be successful and complete the field training program, but there are times where individuals get into it and get through the, the field training program and begin to realize that this is not the right career field for them. And, and so that, some of that. And then we had about six others that, that went on, a couple dispatchers, and then a few officers that for family reasons or whatever, went to another agency or, or left. So looking, looking ahead, this past year, Sergeant James Moore retired in February. We had a, our senior evidence technician retired in October. We've just had, this will be in the 23 numbers, but in January and February, we had two lieutenants and a captain retire. And so, you know, that's not a surprise to us. It didn't catch us by surprise. Several years ago, we began to move the captains around, put them in different divisions. We moved lieutenants and sergeants around, gave, put them in positions, and I was very open and honest with them about that. You know, we had supervisor meetings and got them all in one room, and I said, I'm gonna be moving some of y'all around, and here's why. I want you to be more exposed to different areas of the department, so you're more prepared. So down the road, when, when we have people begin to leave, we have folks that are, we've prepared as much as possible to step up, and so that's kind of where we're at. We ran some of our promotional processes early, which was in the fall, so at the end of January, when that, when that kicked off, we didn't have to start running processes, and it'd be several months before we could fill slots. We were able to, you know, fill those process, fill those positions pretty quickly. I put Sergeant Moore up there on, on the screen, and I've told people, I wish every officer we had could have been at his retirement ceremony. People from, from his community, from his family, talked along with several of us. One lady talked about, she came in and a family member was having, he was having a stroke, he was having a medical emergency, and she called James Moore before calling 911. And I've told that story to our folks, and I said, that is the impact we can have on our community. She called the person she trusted to get help, and it was him. And so we hate to lose those type of people, because they're, you can't replace some of that. He, he's still part-time with us, and we're getting a little bit of work in some of our schools out of him and helping with some events. But, you know, that's, that's the impact that, that our officers can have with the community, and that's why it's important to, for us to be obviously preparing as we have people aging out and, and looking to leave. Some other things quickly. We obtained the Law Enforcement Risk Management Assessment Award, went through that process, kind of slowed it down a little bit during the pandemic, and then got back onto it and got it completed. Matthew Self came and presented to council in May, and I serve on the Chiefs Advisory Committee for the league, and I'm, I'm proud of that fact. I'm proud of the, the involvement with the other chiefs on that committee that I get to interact with, but that was, that was a good thing, I believe, for the department and the city, and, and for us to be involved in, and as long as I'm here, we'll, we'll continue to, to stay involved in that. Just some other things that, that we did, I'll touch on those quickly. Part of it is out of the league stuff, but there's annual policy review that has to be done, that we've completed, and then those were some additional policies that we reviewed through, throughout the year, updating and, and adding to. Some of the other accomplishments that, that, some of them are visible, some of them are not. The front of the building was a huge project. We're appreciative to Ms. Donna, Mr. Tillerbrand, that helped us to be able to complete that. Some of the folks that were in leadership called me and said, how in the world did you finally get that done? The wheelchair ramp had been on the CIP for years, and, and so we, we were proud to be able to, to get that completed. We also did some upgrades out front with the new sign, and, and it's really made a big difference on the front of the building, so we're appreciative of that. We've put in additional lighting throughout the parking lot to help light the parking lot up at night. Three card readers on the back doors were put in. We switched over our duty weapons back in the fall to an upgraded weapon with upgraded sighting systems. We used forfeiture funds to be able to do that all in one year. If, if I had to, to get funding to do that, I would have probably had to phase that in just so it wasn't a large chunk at one time, so I wanted, we went to a nine-millimeter, same company. I didn't want some officers carrying a 45 and some officers carrying a, a different caliper, so we wanted that done all at once. And then the three hybrid police vehicles, those are here, they're not on the road yet. They came in a week and a half ago. Last week, we took them to the outfitters, and they're having all the equipment installed in them, and so we're gonna see, that'll be our test vehicles for the hybrid vehicles to see how those do, and try to look at comparisons with, with gas. They are more expensive on the front end, so we'll, we'll try to do an evaluation and test to, you know, what we're saving in gas with those, and then obviously, we'll have to look at some of the maintenance in a few years with those as well. The agencies I talked to that have those spoke highly of them. I only found one agency that had an issue with one of them, and Ford ended up having to buy it back from them, but it, but it was replaced, but right now, the, the reviews have been pretty good. And that is the summary in a nutshell. Questions that you, you guys, men and women have that I can answer?
Good report. I was curious, the house visits, did you, have you seen an uptick in partnering with elder abuse? Because I know, not necessarily it could be the financial component of it or cause, because I know at the bank, we get partnered, I just didn't know, are you getting, are you seeing that connection to opioid or some of the other crimes, but it's up at the banks?
I, I know our investigators work with adult protective services on a, on a regular basis. I would say yes, but I, I couldn't give you a number of that, but unfortunately, that type of thing, we seem to, we, we seem to see from time to time, it seems like scams are up on, on a regular basis. We typically get, you know, phone calls from the public, hey, I got this call, or I got this email, or I got, and, and a lot of them are, you know, most, the majority of them are out of the country, somebody in another country and going through lots and lots of people.
That takes a lot of manpower digging into that.
It does. Other questions?
Good report.
Yeah, good stuff.
Good stuff. Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, chief. Good report. Thank you for all you, you guys do for us every day. All right, we'll move on then to Consent Agenda Items. Item A are minutes from the city council meeting of Tuesday, February 21st. Item B is a written order approving the preliminary plat. This is the consideration of the written order confirming the decision regarding the preliminary plat for Hillhaven Place per the Lenore Code of Ordinances 19-61 through 19-65. Item C is the Professional Services Agreement, Amendment 1 with Fries &amp; Nichols Incorporated, a recommendation to approve this agreement for the completion of the utilities facilities condition assessment as proposed in the amount of $49,700 as permitted, as submitted. Item D is a lease agreement with the Bernhardt Industries. This is a recommendation from the staff for a resolution authorizing lease of city property for a term of one year to the Bernhardt Transportation LLC. for a term of one year to the Bernhardt Transportation LLC as submitted. And not only your agenda is item E, which are the closed session minutes we reviewed. Uh, this has been reviewed by the council, the city manager and the city attorney for those. That's item E. So I entertain a motion or any questions for the consent agenda items as presented.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve items A through E, uh, including the, uh, closed session, uh, minutes as presented.
Okay. Motion from Reg, Mayor Protem Thomas that we approve the consent agenda items as presented, A through E. No other question? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. All right. We'll move on then to requests and petitions of any citizens. If there's anyone that would like to address the council tonight, that's, would be the time to do so. Okay. Seeing no one on that. All right. We'll move on then to reports and boards of, and of commissions. And, uh, we entertain Mr. Rick Oxford, the plant administrator with the Western Piedmont Council governments. He will hold a public hearing to receive public comments regarding the proposed FY 2023 action plan of the City of Lenore and the Uniform Home Consortium as part of the five-year consolidated plan. This is required by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. It outlines goals and actions plans for the City of Lenore and the Uniform Home Consortium and its use of community development block grant funding. This is for, uh, fiscal year 2023, beginning in July through ending in June 30th, 2024. Rick, welcome.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Uh, as we do every year, we have a, uh, we come to you with a action plan for the home program and for the CDBG program. We have to do a, a five-year consolidated plan for the home program and CDBG program where we describe all of the activities that we might undertake with those funds. And then each year we have an action plan which says, uh, or each year HUD tells us how much they're going to fund those programs. And each year we do an action plan that says we are going to, this year we're going to use money, this much money on this activity and this much money on this other activity. So, um, we're required to have two, uh, public meetings. And this is the first one for the 2023 funding. And I just got, um, the notice of, let's see. Just got notice of how much that funding will be. Uh, this year the city will receive 142,691 dollars, which is down from last year. Last year we had 153,768. Uh, the home program is also down. This year it will receive 1,200,690 dollars. Last year it was 1,230,918 dollars. So both of them are down a little bit. With the home program, in the past, we've done a, a down payment assistance program for first time home buyers, whereby we can provide, uh, assistance to help low-income home buyers. We can assist them with up to, uh, 20% of the purchase price, capping at $30,000. And that is a loan that we make to those people. It's a zero interest loan, zero monthly payment. Uh, half of the loan is forgiven at the 10-year anniversary of the loan. And as interest rates have gone up and housing costs have gone up, uh, that activity has gone down somewhat. So I don't know what the future holds with that. So we currently have plenty of money available. So when I come to you with next year's budget, next time, uh, we probably will have money directed somewhere other than down payment assistance.
So that money doesn't have to be returned if it's unused. It can be diverted to other programs. Is that right?
Uh, we can, well, there's different activities that we can, and we, we'll have it. We have it on hand currently.
Okay.
Money available. It's just, I don't think we need to budget a whole lot more. Uh, so we have been, another activity that we do is we fund, uh, uh, community housing development organizations, CHODOS, nonprofit organizations doing housing-related activities. And, and the home program, uh, those funds are used throughout Alexander Burke, Caldwell, Katoa County. Uh, so, uh, we're, we typically fund some type of nonprofit organization that's using that money to create a housing unit. We also fund multifamily housing, uh, developers that are doing low-income housing tax credit projects. You know, 50, 60, 70 unit apartment complexes and, uh, they're affordable, uh, rental units. And so I think we'll probably have an increase in funding into, into that perhaps. With the, uh, with the CDBG program, uh, we've been using that money, uh, for, uh, improvements at the Old Lenore High School, to the auditorium, to the football field at Cook Stadium, uh, and to the, uh, gymnasium. We've still got money available there to spend, so, uh, probably will spend more. So that's probably where that CDBG money will go. But, uh, I will be, uh, back for the second public meeting on April the 4th. So, so mark your calendars. Okay. Any questions about that? That's the 2023, um, first public meeting for that CDBG and home monies. And those monies will come available, uh, the, the fiscal year runs, uh, beginning July 1st. All right. Any questions on that?
Mr. Oxford.
Yes, sir.
The 1.2 million that you said for home program, is that to build houses or to remodel? Or what is, what do you mean when you say home program?
Well, the home program, that's, uh, that's what we use the, uh, as a down payment assistance program for first time home buyers. It's a four county wide program. Uh, we fund the, uh, the nonprofit organizations and we fund, um, developers that are doing low-income housing tax credit projects. Uh, we did one Katz Corner here in Lenore. Uh, we've done several in Lenore. Uh, uh, Arbor Glen, there at the beginning of, uh, Abington Road, uh, Veridian out beside the golf course on.
That a lot of impact here.
We make loans to those developers, it's low-interest loans. And when they're trying to get their financing, uh, they're trying to get funding from the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency. So it's a competitive process and they have that process once a year. And so you have developers all over the state submitting applications and it's a competitive thing. And so they, those developers will come to me and ask for a letter of commitment to their project if it is funded. And so that's, we're just a piece of the pie. This is a small piece of the pie. Typically those loans that we make them are maximum of $300,000. So.
Okay.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, with the home program, what is the maximum income that a person can have and still qualify for that program?
Uh, okay. Uh, I knew you was going to ask that question. So, uh, one person, it depends on, uh, it's household size, okay? And this is based on 80% of the area median income and those numbers are given to us by HUD. And for, and this is 2022 income limits based on family size. And these numbers will change any day now, okay? Uh, but for one person, it's 33,000, 37,750 dollars. For a two-person household, it's 43,150 dollars. A three-person household, it's 48,550. And four-person, it's 53,900. So as the household number goes up, the income goes up.
And so I, I guess right now, what you alluded to earlier was that the price of homes currently and the interest rates has gotten to a point where it's hard for people to qualify.
Yes. Well, there's other, there's other restrictions that HUD places on us also. Uh, for example, um, on an existing home, uh, maximum purchase price is 198,000 dollars. For an existing home. And, uh, for new construction, it's 251,000. So if they're in, under those income limits and, you know, they might not, can afford that new house and then, you know, 198 for an existing home is, you know, it's a
Hard to find.
Hard to find.
It's hard to find now. So, uh, so those maximum purchase prices will change probably in May. Those income limits will probably change. Now whether that change will be significant enough to, to boost the program, I, I don't know.
Right, right. Okay. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Any other questions of Rick concerning item A, which is the, uh, the programs he described? All right. We'll move on to item B, which is, he also, Rick will be doing a public hearing, receive input concerning the proposed substantial amendment to the FY 2021 action plan City of Lenore and the Uniform Home Consortium as part of a five-year consolidated plan for the purpose of allocating 4,182,773 dollars in home ARP funds, ARP funds. This plan is required by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. It outlines goals and actions for the City of Lenore and the Uniform Home Consortium and the community development block grant funding. And this is for fiscal year, uh, 2021, beginning in July of 2021 and ending June 30th of 2030. Ben Willis talked about this at our retreat last week.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, so, um, the federal government pushed out that 4.9 billion dollars, uh, for this, uh, American Rescue Plan. And, uh, they have pushed it through the home program. That's how I got involved because I do the home program and all of a sudden this shows up. And they put this on my desk and say, do this. And I'm going, oh, okay. Uh, so one of the, so we had, they, you have to do a substantial amendment to your FY 2021 action plan and that's what we're doing. And basically that amendment says, this is what we propose to do with that, uh, 4 million dollars. And the rules are it has to be used for, to assist qualified populations. And those qualified populations are homeless, homeless, at risk of homelessness, fleeing or attempting to flee domestic violence, dating violence, sexual assault, stalking, human trafficking, uh, or other populations where providing supportive services or assistance would prevent the family's homelessness or would serve those at a greater risk of homelessness. Also, uh, the population of, uh, veterans and families that include a veteran that meets one of, one of the preceding criteria. So you have qualified populations. So all the money has to go to benefit those populations. So we had to do, we have to do a plan. And it's called the ARP plan. And there's eligible, certain eligible activities. And we, we had to do consultations. We did consultations with all the city, town, county managers throughout the four county area. We have met with numerous, uh, nonprofit organizations, uh, some police forces, uh, uh, public housing agencies, mental health providers, veterans groups, homeless shelter providers, housing providers, uh, workforce development, employment services. We've met with, uh, medical staff. Uh, you, we've named, talked to a wide variety of people. And, uh, then we've looked at the statistical, uh, data as, as far as the inventory of emergency shelters, transitional, uh, housing, permanent supportive housing. We've looked at the, uh, point in time counts of, uh, of the homeless, i- if they're in a shelter or if they're unsheltered. And different breakdowns, if it's, uh, just a single adult, whether they're a vet, uh, if they're a victim of a domestic violence, if it's a homeless person with at least one child. Uh, so we've looked at all that data. And we've looked at, um, what other cities throughout the country are doing. And we've looked at a Sarasota model, Sarasota Flo- Florida and
You talked about that.
And they're using their funds for, um, a homeless navigator. Or, uh, we didn't really like that term, so we, we were thinking a community service navigator. Cause, uh, we thought, well, whoever's doing that doesn't want to go up and say, hi, I'm the homeless navigator. You know, we don't want to put negative connotations on that. So we're the community navigator, you know? Community service navigator. So there seems to be a disconnect between all these nonprofits, all these service providers. They are, a lot of them are in competition with one another. And sometimes they don't communicate with each other. And there's a variety of people out there with all different needs. Some are, have drug problems, some have mental health problems, some have financial problems. All, all different types of problems that can make them homeless or, uh, facing homelessness or becoming one of those qualified populations. So the consensus was let's, let's get some homeless, let's get some community service navigators and get them out there. Uh, the City of Hickory, uh, Police Department has, has one guy that does that sort of part-time. And we've, we've talked with him. And we, we think that that might be the way to go, to, to get the people out there, talk one, one-on-one with these people, find out what the, what their needs are, what their situation is. And then try to plug them in to the currently available services. So, uh, So that's, and we don't know if that will be a successful thing, but that's, that's what the consensus was proposing as activities. And also, they wanted to, so the majority of the money would be set for supportive, what they call supportive services, to hire. It'd be one, two, three, four, community service navigators. And, and a fifth would be a manager, director, to direct them. Also, about 15% of the budget would be set aside for tenant-based rental assistance. Some, you know, let's say they, they find someone that they can't get on Section 8 housing. There's some reason they can't get into a shelter. This, this would be a fund where they could access fairly quickly to get, you know, let's say a woman shows up and she's got three kids and they're, they got no place to go, you know? And, you know, the women's shelter is full. We don't know. But that would be a pot of available funds that could be used to treat them in an emergency situation. Questions?
We're excited about it. We heard a little bit about it. But the navigators, I would imagine, you mentioned the police department, a person, and that could be just fine. But I would imagine there's some, there's some type of training that, that will be, what do you call it? Consistent with every, throughout the.
They're, they're going, they are going to have a relationship with the police departments. And there is going to be, they're going to be developing relationships with those homeless people.
Yeah.
With all those service providers.
Right.
And mental health, the police department. And, you know, other situations, people that, let's say they're coming out of prison, you know? And they're, they just set them out on the street.
Yeah.
You know, they, this could.
There's a disconnect.
There's a disconnect there.
You got a comment?
Or there's foster, foster kids when they age out.
Right.
They're set out on the street, you know?
Two points I'd make. One is that there will be employees of the COG.
That's what I want, that's what I was getting.
Yeah, Hickory's model, Hickory has someone in their agency, but this will be broader than that and be employed by the COG. And second, these funds are over a period of years. It's not just for next year.
Yes, these funds have to go and last through 2030.
2030, yeah. Yeah, that's good. I was just speaking more of the, just to clarify that, like Hickory's got the one navigator, but it seems like these, these other community navigators are going to be employed by the COG. So they'll have, they'll have training so they'll know how to deal with different people that you just mentioned, all these scenarios. Because you got to have different training to approach all these different people that you're, that's out there. But it's a good start.
It's a start. And those people will have to be hired, found and hired.
Right.
So it'll be, it'll be a process.
Yeah. We're looking forward to it.
Thanks, Rick.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions?
So what I have to do is, with your approval, we'll submit this to HUD. And we have a deadline. It has to be submitted to HUD by March 31st. And that's my job, to get it into HUD. And then they'll say, approved or not? If they say not, then they'll send back and they'll say, well, we, we want you to change this or add this or whatever. But I have looked at plans throughout the country. And this is a very unique approach. So.
Thank you. All right, you've heard the recommendation then for the approval of this plan so that it can be presented to HUD by the, by the deadline? Any other questions? Not, I'll entertain a motion for approval. Councilmember Perkins makes a motion to approve this program as presented by, for the COG, for COG to present to HUD. Any other questions, comments? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. I keep voting anyway.
Yeah, you're, you're all for it.
How long have you been the mayor?
Long time. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll see you on the, in April.
See you on the 4th. I get there every now and then.
I'll vote someday, I'm sure I will.
Do we need to call for public opinion for that?
No, it's by statute.
Yeah, statute. Okay, we'll move on then. Thank you, Rick, for your reports on that. We'll move on to report and recommendations of city manager. Mr. Hildebrand.
A few items for information this evening. The ABC Board will meet on Thursday, March 9th at 2:00 p.m. The Lenore Business Advisory Board will meet on Thursday, March 9th, 6:00 p.m., 3rd floor, City Hall. The City County Service Committee will meet on Monday, March 13th at noon. I think the EDC is meeting on Tuesday, March 14th at 8:30 a.m. The North Carolina Main Street Conference will be in next Tuesday, March 14th through Thursday, March 16th. And that's going to be in Statesville at their Civic Center. And then the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board will meet on Monday, March 20th at 6:00 p.m. at Mulberry Rec Center. Two other announcements. Google's teaming up with BetaBox Learning to go back and have mobile STEM labs at the MLK Center this Saturday, March 11th. And that begins at 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 o'clock. And I think the first 300 attendees will get free food from food trucks. So encourage kids to come out for that. They'll have experiments, including coding, artificial intelligence, robotics, and 3D printing. Also, the Elektron Elite 5K and 10K will be held on Saturday, March 18th, 2023. That's going to be held on the Lower Greenway out of the soccer complex. And the registration, I think, begins to go up tomorrow. It's $25 for the 5K, $35 10K. But I think tomorrow it goes up. So if anybody's watching this and wants to sign up, and John, you go ahead and take reservations for the rest of the folks out there. But, so that's underway on March 23rd, or March 18th.
March 18th?
Do we meet on the 14th or we don't meet on the 14th?
Okay. No, any questions for Mr. Hildebrand concerning anything coming up? Do encourage you to come to the thing on Saturday if you can, to the Marloth King Center for the Google introductions and that kind of thing. So plan to be there for that if you can. All right, we'll move on. Any report from our city attorney, Mr. Rohr?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Do have a couple items from the mayor's office. I do have a board appointment. This is for the Board of Adjustments. And I will recommend that Curtis Baker, who serves on our planning board right now, to serve a term on the Board of Adjustments that will expire June of 2026. This was, was announced at our February 21st meeting by the council. Do, would remind you that the, the planning board members are also serve on the Board of Adjustments. So this is not separate people that we're bringing in. We are moving people who are either rotating off of Board of Adjustments or have changed, whatever, and filling that role. So Curtis will be filling that role on our Board of Adjustments and currently serves on the planning board. Just so everyone knows what, what's going on with that. All right, entertain a motion for that?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion for Mayor Pro Tim Thomas to approve the appointment to the Board of Adjustments for Curtis Baker. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. And I have one other for you. As you know, the Caldwell County Economic Development Commission, which we knew as the EDC, is no longer an independent entity and now operates as the Caldwell County Department. The previous EDC Board of Directors and the Caldwell County Sales Tax Reinvestment Committee are being dissolved and are now being replaced with the Economic Advisory Committee, which we call the EAC, that will have voting representatives from each municipality and from other entities around the county, such as Caldwell Community College and some others, that are vital to the economic development in Caldwell County. The names of the municipal representatives for the EAC have to be submitted by tomorrow, Wednesday, March 8th, 2023, so that all of the committee members can be approved at the next commissioner's meeting scheduled for Monday, March 13th. As with that, I'll make the suggestion that we appoint city manager Scott Hildebrand to serve as our representative on the EAC as presented. We have talked to a couple of other municipalities and their managers. As far as we know, will be serving in those capacity as well. I know the town of Granite Falls approved it last night. And we think the town of Hudson has approved that as well. So these will be serving as part of, they will now be representatives on the Economic Advisory Committee as presented. So I will throw that out to you for a recommendation that he be serving as our representative today.
Make a motion to appoint Mr. Hildebrand.
Thank you. From Councilmember Purdue makes a motion to appoint Mr. Hildebrand to the EAC Committee. No other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Hildebrand. Take it on another job. On that, all right, I'll move on then to any reports, recommendations of any of our council members.
Mayor, I'd like to take this time to wish you a happy 80th birthday tomorrow.
Ouch.
You sound, you sound like you've aged.
I sound like I've aged, yes.
I just, anyway, I hope you have a happy birthday.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
It's not 80.
Looking forward to it. Hope my voice sounds better so I can talk for my birthday. Is it 80?
We don't meet no more.
No.
He's not caught with you yet, all right.
I'll always be behind you.
I just want to announce also, the National League of Cities Meeting, our Congressional Cities Meeting in Washington is into this month. And our only elected representative at the meeting will be Mayor Pro Tim Thomas. So she will be the voting delegate. Just want to get that in the record.
Okay.
TJ and I cannot vote, so.
So by default, she's her.
No, no, you don't want TJ to vote, right?
No, I mean, but by default, she's, she's our, yeah.
I'm, I'm it.
Yeah. So just want to put it on the record.
Okay.
That's the Congressional Cities Conference up there. The last thing I would bring up, I would like to say thank you for everyone being involved in our master plan meetings that were held over the last weekend, Friday and Saturday. We had a great turnout from the community. We had over 200-plus people that came Friday night. And the two Saturday meetings, thanks to Kaylin, Matthew, and John Hogan, and all you guys, everybody that was there and a part of that. Hannah was there, I know, and others. And we appreciate that. We had a lot of great input, heard a lot of great, great comments, a lot of all kind of comments. And that's what we're there for, was for the DLR group to, to hear all of that so they could put it all together. Councilmember Perkins was also there. And we appreciate everyone who could, who could be there. I know there's future meetings. Kent was there, that's right. He was Friday night. I won't leave anybody else. I know Rouse's wife was there. He sent the best part of his team up there. So we appreciate everyone who was a part of that. They're, they're going to put it all together and come back with more information, more meetings. And then we'll be looking for, for September to get their final report as to what our master plan is. All right, anything else to come before us tonight? All right, if not, we stand adjourned.